Make a motion to approve minutes presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Approval of the January 1 minutes.
Approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? No. Okay, let's move right on to department reports. Police.
Alright, I've handed y'all packets with our activity. And in the future, if y'all want this electronic, just let me know, or yeah, whoever wants it.
I do upload it electronically too.
Okay, so just let you know, they can just contact you?
Yep, Lita sends it to me and I go ahead and send it out electronically.
Okay, so they already have it then. Okay, well I wasn't for sure if you did. If anybody still wants a hard copy, we can get one that way. This summary is just last month's activity and y'all can look for yourself on most of it. I'll just highlight some of the, I'll just go over some of the highlights of it. Accidents, year to date last year was 368. This year we worked 415. Month of December, we worked 38, involving five injuries. Sitations wrote, 2017 was 1949, 2018 was 2474. Month of December, 236. Written warnings, 2867, and 2017, 49 and 2018. 377 were written in December. DWIs, in the year of 17 was 70. 56, 2018, there was two DWI arrests made in December. The total number of calls that we received in 2017 was 22,525. We just about matched that in 18, with 22,510, 1,769 being in December. The next page there, that is our school resource officers' report. You see they have 32 classroom room lectures. And something that I was unaware of till taking this, it looks like we also do quite a bit of counseling. Noted down there, they had sessions with students, parents, and faculty, where the numbers corresponded there, how many different ones they had in the month of December. The next page there is the monthly caseload, shows the number of our specific crimes that were reported and worked, and ones that have been closed. And they're either closed by arrest or unfounded. And that continued on with the second page, or the next page there is the same thing. Get over to the, not number, but the page where it gives up the total offenses. For the month of December, there was 49 worked, there was 11 that was closed. For the year, there was 719 worked, 468 closed. Property reported stolen for the year was 444,000. Property recovered, 214,000. Total number of arrests for the year was 110, and 15 for the month. And then there's the month totals. Property stolen, 16,000. Property recovered, 19,000. The narcotics cases, if you'll notice those, for the month of December, there was eight offenses that were worked by the narcotics officer, which at this time, we only have one. And if you'll notice, the year today, he worked 108 cases and closed 56 of those cases. Narcotics seized and property seized, and there's the values that we have seized, or he has seized. $218,000 was seized in narcotics last year, and property seized was $11,660. On that note, I will say, well, as of tomorrow morning, we will be adding a second narcotics officer. And we're not hiring a physician to do it. We've done that just by doing a little restructuring within the department. And so we'll have a second narcotics officer starting to work. And that number, 108, unfortunately, that will double because it's there. It could as much as triple. So, but if it's there, we want to get it. So that's something I look forward to seeing by adding this other position, what we can do. Alright, next page. Warrant division. We have one officer, our detective, that does nothing but serve warrants. He served 193 warrants, 43 of them physical arrested in the month that he served. Year to date, 2,473 warrants served, 770 people arrested. Fees collected for the year was $29.90, and last month was $240. And then there's the monthly sex offender traffic statistics. Next page, animal patrol. Animal patrol answered 100 calls in December. Year to date, he answered 130. Last page is our community engagement activity that's involving our two officers that we are at this time receiving cops grant money for their positions. They had contacts with 25 local businesses, done extra patrol or residence checks on 21 separate locations, and community events they were requested at and went to were two, or excuse me, there are two, and the community events were 16. But throughout the month, they reached a number of 1,480 people. So, I think that's good on their part. And that's pretty much the report that I have for last month and the year ahead. So, y'all have any other questions?
Chief, I know you knew the position and you probably don't have a lot of information in regards to the traffic violations, the number of accidents, citations compared to prior year. Is there any insight into additional traffic? Is it additional, you know, increased enforcement, or?
Probably a little both. I don't know as far as traffic. Traffic's usually, well, it's over the last 10 or 15 years, I can tell you that's increased. When how much traffic increases per year, I don't know. We do have special enforcement. The guys work a step program, DWI, which is a federal overtime program, and a seatbelt overtime program. So depending on how many guys work that program, would make a difference in citation issue. And like I said, it's my first month. To me, 56 DWIs seem low.
Okay.
To me. And now, of course, I'm looking at it from a state police perspective. And I know the city officer's job is a lot different than just working traffic. And that's mainly what state does. But, that being said, I would like to see, in relation to our accidents, how many of them are DWI-related compared to our arrests. And that's something that I'll look at over here. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Wade, go next.
Just wanted to give a brief update on the lake cleanup project. I know the news coverage has been quite thorough, but we are shifting the operation from the search phase. We've reached a point where, they call it 100% POD, with the probability of detection is not there. Well, we're not going to find anything with the search operation. So we have shifted over to prepping the material, getting it ready to take to the farms adjacent to the wastewater plant, stop pile it there, and starting to put the park back together. It is going to take some time, a few weeks at least, to get the playground side all done. We have gone ahead and shifted the fence on the playground side of the park to where we can now open that back up to the public for access from Lake Shore Drive parking lot. They'll not be able to go under the bridges or anything, but they can at least get to the playground if we get warm enough weather on the weekend to take the kids out there. Next month, we will provide, at committee meetings, a financial update as far as what the cost has been, as well as our estimates in order to put everything back together and get it ready. The goal will be to be out of that park before spring really sets in. That way, it's open for the public. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I guess I don't know, would be you, police chief, any more information on our DNA on the?
Chief Reddy?
Yes, we were told Tuesday that there was no viable DNA available off of the tissue that was sent. However, we can send it to another lab, and if we are sending it to another lab, that will be able to determine if it is human. So, we can go that route, but even, that's the only issue we'll have. We won't be able to tell who it would look like. If it occurs, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you Wade. Chief Lowry?
Kind of along Wade, what he was talking about, of course, we've been working with the creek still somewhat up until last week. I'm going to have, tomorrow actually, I'm going to have some guys and some equipment with help from Wade's bunch up there in the island creek, as I call it, down to the tunnel to revisit some areas of interest. Will still be, especially after any kind of flooding or any kind of turnover of the creek area and the debris down creek, we'll be looking at that again as well, as needed. As far as a bunch going on, there's really just not much left to do. So, we've been real busy this month. We've changed dispatch from PD to 911s dispatching us now to every emergency in the city. So, we're a little busier than we have been in the past. So that's taken some getting used to, as far as medical calls and that kind of stuff. Really with that, I think you all should have gotten any reports.
But switching that to 911, is that going to involve an increase in personnel there? Because the one time that I had any interaction with them, there was one person on and they never answered the phone.
Yeah, no, it doesn't require it right now. That may be something down the road we have to address, but I'm talking to ISO requirements for dispatchers. They are bound with the warning, based on the, because again, like Chief Reddy said, you know, his dispatchers were taking how many thousands of calls? And 911 is, those calls still come in, but they've been transferred. So it wasn't taking their time to deal with it. So they're dispatching us now. I will say that, you know, the response time is a lot quicker coming from there because it's not the transfer process, so.
So can you give us the reason why the transition from where it was being dispatched to 911?
Yes, mainly ISO. I got to doing some studying on points. In our last ISO rating, which were three, we scored really low on dispatch, because of that transfer process. Chief Reddy and I, we've all talked about central dispatch and where that needs to go down the road. But what we found out was, is some of the rural departments, their scores were having 911 as their main dispatch, was about, out of 10, they was getting four more points than what we was. Where we was getting three and a half, they were getting seven and a half. So, I know that doesn't sound like much, but in that scheme of things of ISO rating, it's considered. So that's one of the elements of ISO that we have to take care of. So that was the main reason. Again, there was nothing against.
Just clarify for the public.
No, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, that's the main reason.
So do we still have, I guess, risk, do we still have two sets of dispatchers? 911 calls go into the 911 center, dispatch police, fire, ambulance. What about a regular phone call? Somebody just calls the PD and says, "Come here." And then you have dispatchers on duty here that'll turn around and dispatch that.
Yeah, the only ones that they're doing now are distributed for us. If that's any kind of.
Emergency situations are all done 911.
No, for fire only. Law enforcement, it still gets transferred over to them for their dispatch. Any other questions? You'd like me to talk about that later?
Thank you. Okay, Luke?
Alright, we got W2s this week. We had 267 W2s. That's 267 people that the city has paid this past year. And 182 of those, or roughly two-thirds, were actual people that were, had a retirement plan or were full-time employees. About 85 were part-time seasonal, that can be where from our parks, seasonal people, because they're part-time to our fire and police, part-time people. So that's just kind of a number. Anything over 250 is kind of what the IRS likes to see as a large employer and you have to submit everything electronically. We've been doing it for a while now anyways, but just wanted to kind of give that. It is up a little bit from last year. I think we were at 258 last year, so about 911, I think, from last year. Also, the collection agency that we talked about, we had collected, the collection agency itself has collected $1,200 to begin with the 31st of December. So that's $1,200 we haven't been getting. And we have collected a little bit more in-house too, that we submit to them, let them know that we have collected that. So there's another, probably $300 or $400 there. That's not big money, but again, that's money that we were not collecting prior to that. And then I did upload November financial statements to Google Docs. Hopefully you all got that. I think I was uploading it to the old Google Docs, but I think I've got that corrected now to go to the new one. You'll see November is about 300,000 in the general fund. I expect it to stay that way through December, if not, maybe tick up a little bit. We have not received franchise fees yet for December, but with the way that's been going, it should be up. And I expect revenues and expenses to be about the same, if not a little bit higher on revenues in December. So hopefully we'll end right around that 300 mark, maybe, again, maybe a little bit higher. So, good news on that end of it. I can't finish December financials until February 28. Our auditors want to make sure that we get everything that would be in last year, in last year. So, I know you'll probably be looking for your December financial statements, but I can't get it to you. I can get you a prelim, but it won't be final until the 28th.
Okay. Thank you Luke. David?
Yeah. See, Wade's department, we purchased 14 iPads and cases for their department, for the asset.
Asset essentials.
Asset essential software. We're also working, been working on a team with Department of Information Systems in Little Rock on our backup, going through and renewing all of our licenses for Sister Maroc fireable, and possibly looking to add two for our fire departments, two or other fire departments. Studying an e-fax solution, either e-fax or Ring Central, about kind of a set of adding a new phone line for faxing, maybe adding it so you can get a 3D mail or something like that. Still sending them to see faxing, we're just kind of looking into that a little bit. We're police serving, we're going to be looking at ordering soon because it needs to be updated. Support's going to be in the near future on that. So that's a thing we got coming up this year, is updating the police server and all the software that's involved in that. We are looking at security PN solution for off-site access in cases when we need to work and we have access programs from outside the office of few select people. So we're looking into that. And we're working on renewing all the virus protection enterprise-wide, and looking at police's expires and baby works. We're looking at a new, possibly renewal and going with a different virus protection solution. In those areas, new PCs coming in, new budget year started, money's there. So plenty of that going on right now. Updating the website, still in kind of a, in the process right now, is updating the website, the new one. And then we'll be going to that sometime in the near future, going live on that one, the one that you all council approved last year. We've updated our Docincents search imaging and archiving solution in the last few months ago on the workstations. We upgraded a digital ally, new vault, police body cam server in the workstations there too. So, a lot of fun stuff going on, so it's all that stuff.
Thank you. Chuck?
The only thing I have to report right now is, we're talking about the light poles. Last time I was in here, the lighting company did not work out. So, we're in the process of taking bids right now to let you replace at least two more this year, which we're going to do in August after all of our tournaments are over. So that's what we're doing, in the process of doing right now. We had a good day in Little Rock. We received all 3A state tournaments, baseball, softball, and soccer. And we eat another regional for 2A, so we're going to be booked up in May again. So, that's really good. And then we added a basketball tournament that we haven't been able to do in four years since I've been here, was my first one, January 5th and 6th. And we had 32 teams play in that tournament two days. That was a really good deal. And we got four, three more of those slotted for this year, and I think it might. So that's something new going on. And then we're in the process of, I talked to the CBB board this morning. Arkansas Athletics Association just passed the esports, which is electronic gaming that will be played in, all the high schools will have teams now that are certified to play in what's called the electronic sporting events. So, we're trying to get on the front end of that and be able to host those too, with all those schools coming to Northark. We've partnered up with Northark and I've got with their IT guys, because they have enough bandwidth to do those kinds of tournaments. So, we're trying to get on the front end of that. So, that's kind of something new and interesting that we're trying to do for kids and all that play the normal sports, but now they're getting into electronics. We're trying to offer that for everybody. So that's something we're trying to get into. But I have a, one of my workers is big into the electronic sporting, so we're already ahead of the game of that. He can even build the PCs himself. So, we're really excited about that. So, that's something new and a new adventure for parks.
Didn't you, you're telling Old Cogger, you're showing Old Cogger how that works? I'm curious, esports, is there any sweat to it?
Well, part of esports would be like Xbox or PlayStation. It could be a console game. It could be one of those tournaments, or it can be a PC tournament, which I don't know if you would know any of it. I mean, I learned a lot the last two months, the games they're going to be playing is League of Legends, which I had no idea what that was. I had, he showed it to me on YouTube, but I will tell you that the Lakers Forum, they had their big national tournament, and it was full of 100,000 people on the outside watching it. And they gave away $2.5 million to the winning team. So it's big. Other high schools have already passed it, like I think we looked up the Kentucky one, and they had 72 teams at their first state tournament. That's how many kids are involved in this. So, that's a big deal coming in the future.
Do these kids travel to those schools and do it on their own?
A lot of what they're doing right now in the spring is going to be online, where they hook up through a server and they kind of play each other that way. The LAN tournaments, what they call the LAN tournaments, will be when they bring them all into one spot to do it. And we're trying to get set up to do that. So, that's something new, but it may cost us a little bit upfront, but it'd be well worth it in the long run, because we'll be the only ones, I think, up first right now, because we're trying to get, that we can host it, maybe get one every year like we are in base on sort of all. So we can be established in that too. So, that's pretty good. I'm excited about it, and my workers are excited about it because it's something new. We're actually hosting our first gaming tournament, just so we can practice and start trying to host them on February 16. We're doing a console game tournament, so that's.
Tell Bill what time.
Can you come and watch?
Yeah.
I'm curious, if I'll get out.
Yeah, there's a, there's a big increase in it, and so we're trying to get it added to what we're doing. So, that's something new that's going on. So we're going to try this year. And I'm also talking volleyball now, trying to get volleyball tournaments. So I'm trying to see where you can get that going on. And soccer, trying to host a soccer tournament with Cogger at least. So it'll be something new too. A lot of stuff going on at parks, so, plus trying to add more kid-friendly those to our summer rec programs and after-school, so we're still trying to build up those programs as well. So, we're actually going to add a gaming partner to that too. I've got people donating the consoles and everything for the league, so we can get leagues going on after-school program. So it's went from now to push from physical activity, now pushing some gaming too. So you got to kind of compensate both of those. So, we're trying to get on the front end.
Thank you Chuck.
Anytime y'all like, once we get going, anytime y'all would like to come over and kind of see how it goes, just give me a call and I could kind of get you going.
So any updates on the all-inclusive part? Stretch a little bit here, the all-inclusive.
Not yet. I don't have any updates yet. I haven't received another letter about the funding. Rotary's working right now, raising their funding. That's okay. That's as hard as.
There is one thing Chuck's going to report on in February, and I want to give him a little bit of that tonight. And I'll give you as much as we know. Chuck and I and Jerry Farmer went out yesterday, and we kind of found the golden nugget we were looking for in the means of a dog park. So he's putting all the plans together, and he'll have them in February to present to the council. So hopefully we'll get going on that real quick.
I'm taking it to my board on Monday's meeting and talking about the dog park. Where are we going to try to place it, and all that.
Okay.
So, that's all I have, thank you.
Let me ask Chuck some.
Yes, sir.
Watching the Senate stuff in Little Rock last two couple days, they say that our school systems don't have the bandwidth to do esports yet. And they're trying to get the bill passed down there to make it to where they can. How soon is Paris going to be able to come online with it?
I don't know. Like I said, we're already on the upper end of that with Northark. So, this first gaming tournament we're doing, Cox is actually going to sponsor our tournament, and they're going to bump up our bandwidth for free that weekend, so we can handle all of them, all those consoles going on at one time. I don't know about the school, that'd be something.
Well, they were talking like, no school that they knew of at the meeting had the bandwidth to do esports in the high schools, so.
I don't know. So maybe they'll have to come through us.
Well, they're trying to get the bill passed, which could happen, but I was just wondering how they were going to, if they're going to do esports in the school, how they're going to actually do it, pass through a version of it.
I think that what they're trying to do, when we talk to the main guys at Arkansas Players Association in the spring, it's kind of a build-up, kind of try to get teams built and then get them going, and then really push it into next fall, when they get back in the school. So maybe they'll have all the iron work out, the fire before fall, when they have the big actual launch. So it's kind of a warm-up for the spring.
If we get the bill passed.
If you get the bill passed, I'm assuming. Unless the school goes out and raises their own money to do it, or some kind of grant or something like that, probably. That's all I know.
Alright Chuck, thank you. Thank you. Committee reports, Joel. Love that, not saying. Goes to you, Mitch Finance.
Another thing, Mr. Mayor, we have is a Christmas live expenditure request. Rick Schoenberger is here. I was going to have him go ahead and speak to it again, Rick, if you don't mind, so that the public as a whole will see what we're doing, or what's being requested. They're getting a discount if we buy our lights at this time, with the help of that committee, that group, just trying to collide up here. And I don't know, Jeff, you've got the graphic around the creek that we saw during committee or not, but in any event, Rick, I'll let you speak to it.
Okay. I did give this finally in to you guys, and that we sent it a couple different times, but if you looked at, I had pages, bird-sighted. If we ordered this in the fall, if I come back and ask you for this in the fall, the project for the 60 wreaths for around the park, from this 60, unit cost is $510 per reed to go up on the poles, comes to $30,600. And by getting a jump on it and getting them ordered before the end of February, we, it drops down $10,098 is the 33% we're going to save to the cost of $20,502. As of this morning, the CBB did, but they're $10,000 up on it, and they're there in the game. I've asked the city for $10,000. And this whole project actually is more than that, because the shipping on this, with the extra 500, I'm kicking in another 1,600, plus the strand lights on all the poles and everything like that, is around another 8,000. I'm covering that. I mean, I've got skin in this game. I have managed the money's right to what we've drawn in from the public and everything. All that money is accountable in Chamber Foundation. So everything, anything I do, I send an invoice, I don't want money. My endgame in this is lights. So, any other things that I could? So any other things that I can answer on that?
No, I think you said that we're going to pay the company direct.
Yeah, 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 we've done that all the time.
Okay. Excellent.
I gotta say it, I just gotta say it. On your video game?
Yeah.
When you invite these guys, pom, you remember, pom.
I actually know about that.
Okay, Rick, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we're good there. Thank you.
Order much, Rick.
And again, you will need to give Luke the billing.
Oh, yeah, not, it's not a problem with me whatsoever.
Linda?
We had a committee that discussed some treadmills to be purchased for the wellness program to the city employees. It's a good buy for the three treadmills. We lost the treadmill, and I think that was one of the items that was the most of it. And thank you, Wayne, for donating the treadmill. And so we'd like to take out a budget of $2,000 for the wellness to purchase the three for $6.25.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? See how easy that is, Linda?
Yeah.
When there's a need, they respond. We'll go down to Mary Jean.
I think my chiefs have very well covered everything.
Did a good job, didn't they?
Yes, they did, and I'm very proud of both of them.
Well, Bill Boswell.
As far as a formal report, Wade and I met yesterday over at the city shop. We went through a plethora of things that are facing the city, not only in everybody's current concern about solid waste, but sewer, water, code enforcement, health concerns, the whole nine yards. There's a lot of exciting things coming forward. Right now, there's nothing really to throw out on the table, do you think, Wade?
That's up to you. We'll have, we'll have several things hit next month.
Right, we will have things, especially in the committee meeting, thanks for, for a couple weeks. But again, I would encourage the committee members to, you know, listen to your constituents. My phone and my, I guess you call it my esports event now, has kind of lit up since we had a meeting with England in regard to their proposed rate increase. And so we'll definitely discuss that in December, or excuse me, in February. I feel very comfortable in telling, in saying this, that it's running about 99% according to our constituents. No. Now, what we'll come up with when we sit down as a committee, yet to be seen, and I have a few questions I need to ask Grant, legal questions before we come back to the council. Out of that, that's all.
Yeah, excellent, Bill, thank you. Chris Head?
Nothing else to jump to than that.
All right. All right, I guess we're going into the old business, nothing, new business. We have three, two appointments and one reappointment for the planning commission, and I think we need to take these individually. First, I have Larry Davis to be appointed to the planning commission. I think you all know Larry, you know his past and background, and we're just fortunate to have him agree to serve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in three seconds, and all in favor of Larry?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. And then we also have Kelsey Bard, I think that's going to be...
I'll make the motion to approve. Bard, second.
All in favor of Kelsey?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We got Mike Norton, and I really almost begged Mike to take that on, if you all know, Joel, you're on that, and Mike is the brains of the bunch. He knows it all, so I'm really happy he agreed to serve again, so we got the reappointment of Mike Norton.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, that was easy. Hope it continues to go this, this smooth. I want to make a few comments, and then we open it up to questions or comments in front of the audience. But first of all, I had a opportunity to spend last week in Little Rock with four of you, Linda, Chris, Wayne, and my favorite pastor Heath. Got to, we got to spend time together.
Is he number two, he was that? He was that one?
Has he joined the church?
Well, he's not here. He's here, you never know. But, I mean, we had a great time together, we learned a lot, and I really, really want to encourage the rest of you that haven't been there in the last, say, five years, and this really, I want, I want the department heads to go next year also, because there were a lot of police chiefs and fire chiefs and Luke's, there were a lot of you guys there, so. So that was really, really a good thing. City Hall, I don't know if any of you saw the news last night, Caitlin covered it a little bit, and I was at a meeting this morning talking about this, and there were about 20 people there, and Heath was the only one that watched it, so it was, or at least the only one that raised his hand. But she covered it pretty well, but one thing that I want, her's a Daily Times here, yeah, there it is. I want to make sure that the community understands, we're looking at taking the Duran Center, and that's the lower level, back where the big convention center and the offices and breakout rooms, the old security bank where they operated. The tower is not included in what we're taking. That's something the college is dealing with on their own. So it's very important when we talk about this to let the community know, because I don't want the time to come and all of a sudden they tear down the tower or something like that, and, and they thought we were taking it, because we're just interested in the other part. So that's City Hall, and we're all excited about that. I wanted to ask Chief Grady to share something, and he knows what he can share, we can probably share it all, because yesterday, or two days ago, he and Chief Kegel grabbed me and they thought we found something. And in regards to the blinds thing, we went up on the creek bed, and it was interesting to see the process of what our chief can do today, and I'm not saying the old chief couldn't, but he showed me a picture of what was found in the creek bed. We got in the car, and by the time we arrived at the scene, the state crime lab sent him a message back that said, "It's animal. It's not human." So I thought that was very interesting on the connections that our police chief has to able to make that happen so quick like that. So that was excellent. I know, I'm sure word got out that something was discovered, and again, it was animal. And the one thing we're doing and we're making sure of, we won't tell anybody, he and I and Chief Kegel and Mark Lowry, and Wade, of course, outside of that, it's got to be the family knows everything first, and that's, that's kind of our protocol. Last Friday night, we all met with the family, and you know, it's unfortunate, I wish the city council could have been there, and I really, and Jeff was there. But you all can't be there. If you're there, they've got to be there, or at least invited, and, and we didn't want to put that on the family, because we wanted to give the family an update that the whole lake had been cleared, and we had really hoped and thought last week we were going to discover something in the lake. One of the firefighters, Tom Ketchum, he is kind of the expert in this area, and he really believed we were going to wash it. But we didn't, and that's why we pulled the family together and all of us, and we spent about an hour and a half together, and it looks like they're going to hold a celebration on life for, for John and Amy next week, so hopefully that'll be a good step forward. And that's where we are with them, and it looks like that's it. That's all I have, and this time we open it up to any of you. Yes, sir?
Bob Kramer. Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. I'm curious about the, moving the City Hall to the Duran Center.
Yes, sir.
And if the, if the college does decide to give up or tear down the tower there, there's going to be a big hole there. Who's, what's going to happen there? Who's going to pay for that? What's, how does that come about?
That's going to be totally our responsibility after it happens. The college will pay to demolish the tower. Once that's gone, we will either repair the parking lot, but our hopes are, at that time, we can build a new police headquarters in that spot, in the footprint of the tower. That's what our hopes are. That's a little ways off. We're taking this piece by piece, and the first piece is administration, finance, and water to take over the Duran Center part. But the second phase, we hope, will be the police, and if not, it'll be our responsibility to repair the parking lot.
Okay, so the, the city is going to move the offices into part of the Duran Center. What's going to happen with the, like, the convention center? What are the plans there?
You know, I'm really glad you're asking these questions, because the more opportunities we have to share with the public, the better. The, the big convention center is going to remain like it is. We will take over renting that. Hopefully, we can gain some revenue through renting that. We also have several of the small breakout rooms, and most of them will remain, and we'll continue to rent them just like they're being, so there really shouldn't be much change. We'll have to build a entrance if the tower is gone. We still have hopes that the tower will stay. You know, that's a very important part of our community, but we're kind of outside of the decision-making on that. But we'll have to create an entrance, and that's pretty much it. The rest of it will remain.
So where will the city offices be, like, there's a sprock room and some of that, is that going to be?
Yeah, first of all, we have water and finance that consists of about six people. And if you go in the Duran Center and go off to the left right now where the offices are, there are four offices, plus there's a room that has the window when it was security bank to drive through, that's going to work perfect for the water. So along with that, that's where water and finance is going to be located. Very little's going to have to be done, maybe one wall moved or two, but not much construction. The, the rest that's left is Jeff Pratt, myself, Christine, and David. That's the rest of the administration that's left, and we will take up one, one and a half, maybe two of the rooms over there, and we'll also make the aisles just a little narrower that'll give us some space, but there will still be plenty of rooms left for people.
So the convention center will basically still be intact?
100%.
And use the law, rent a hole?
Now, there's a total...
All the kind of thing as is right now.
To, to put it in, in perspective, there's a total of 23,000 feet in the Duran Center. Over here, we have under 10, closer to eight, I believe, and that houses administration, water, finance, and police. So we're going to be bumping up in size greatly, that we can leave most of what's intact there, but it's going to be a wonderful City Hall, something I've been looking for.
And the Duran Center will still be intact and...
Yes, sir.
Rentable and income for the city?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It almost looks like this was the setup. Not at all. Not at all. I loved it.
Sure, that was a plan.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Good, thank you.